Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, March 6. I will note for the record that Commissioner Githens is joining us via Teams and Commissioner Jones and myself are present in the Nat U Hill Room. And with that, we will begin with our public statement, please.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. All right, with that, we are going to move on to our department updates, and we'll begin with Ms. Kelly from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So COVID emergency room visits, cases, and wastewater concentrations have all continued to decrease in Monroe County. The CDC has updated guidance on COVID isolation. They are now recommending to end isolation if you have been fever-free for 24 hours and your symptoms are improving. They do still recommend to continue wearing a mask for five days after you end isolation. Flu activity across Indiana is still noted as high. Our public health clinic has vaccines available for all ages. You can call 812-353-3244 for more information.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
I'm not there today because of COVID, so I want to make sure that since I've had it, that I don't infect others.
Thank you so much. Feel better. All right. We also have a department update from Ms. Ridge.
Good morning. I just want to remind the public, we are having a Fullerton Pike Phase III public meeting, March 25 at 5:30 in the Bachelor School Cafeteria. This will be to answer questions about the timeline, when the contractor starts, any changes that have been made, just to keep the public informed of the process of that project. Also, on our website, we will put contact information for three major projects that's going to go on in the county this summer. The Cars Trail Extension Project, the Vernal Pike Connector Project, and the Fullerton Pike Phase III. We will have contractor information, phone numbers, emails, highway department personnel, and our construction inspection firm. So you should not have any problems if you have any questions, concerns on any of those projects to reach out. And then we also have Kelsey Thetonia here to have an introduction for, on behalf of our department.
Kelsey Thetonia, MS4 Coordinator. I've been working with the Blue Ribbon Commission for the Climate Resilience Plan for the county, and we've been working at the staff level with our IU Climate Resilience Fellow. Peter Iverson has been a big help getting this moving forward, and I'm excited to be more involved with this project as a member of the committee. So I'd like to introduce you to Victoria Seast, who is our IU Climate Resilience Fellow. She will give an introduction, brief overview of what she is up to this semester, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Ms. Seast. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Kelsey, for that. Let me sign in. My name is Victoria Seast. I'm a senior at IU, and I am Monroe County's Climate Resilience Fellow. I've got a quick little presentation for you guys, just to show what I've been up to this semester. A little about me, I'm a senior from Rossville, Indiana. I'm double majoring in International Studies and Geography. I thought I wanted nothing to do with agriculture when I came to IU, because I'm from a really small farming town, and I realized, you know what? I care so much about the environment and agriculture that I wanted to make it my second degree. I've spent the past summers working in various capacities throughout the state of Indiana, doing nonprofit work, some environmental consulting, and it's all kind of brought me back to community-based environmental work. Fun fact, I've been skydiving every year since my 18th birthday. And you can head to the next slide. It's a little grainy, but what the Climate Resilience Project really is, is a commitment to the future. So it's a commitment that Monroe County is making to be aware of the changes in our climate and sort of thinking of what we can do to move forward in the future. And you can head to the next slide. I want to give a huge thank you to the county commissioners. Without you guys, this would not have been possible. This is an awesome undertaking and something I'm very honored to be a part of. Additionally, there's been two prior McKinney Climate Fellows that have worked, Hadar and Todd, and they're both amazing. And additionally, the Blue Ribbon Commission, wonderful group of people who are very committed to furthering Monroe County's environmental work. There's really three parts to this plan. The implementation matrix, which we'll see on the next slide, the Climate Resilience Plan, and personally, for me, as a student, I need to have some deliverable projects, and we really want to keep this momentum going throughout the semester, so implementing projects is the last thing we'll see. So this looks very scary, and it's a bit intense, but what we've done throughout the past year, the previous Climate Fellows have conducted climate vulnerability workshops and strategy workshops with members of Monroe County. So through those workshops, we've identified risks, things in the county that we want to improve, et cetera, et cetera. So this is just an example of how we would come to developing a project. So we would have the issue or the strategy on the left-hand side, figure out who exactly is responsible for implementing that project, because a lot of times, projects go by the wayside because there's not one person responsible. So that's our main goal, finding someone responsible, who else is going to be involved, and then figuring out, is this a great opportunity for Monroe County? Is there support? Is this feasible, et cetera, et cetera? So this is just a quick little overview of some of the possible things we will be doing. Get to the next one. Which brings us to the Climate Resilience Plan. Monroe County is going to be the first county in the state of Indiana to develop a Climate Resilience Plan, which is awesome, deserves a round of, like, Monroe County, round of applause, so amazing. So within the Climate Resilience Plan, it's going to be a 170-page document, very large, very robust, and within it, we're really looking at climate change trends. We've identified, looked at the science behind what's happening in Monroe County, where we're most vulnerable, what our resilience strategies will be, and how we can reach out to our stakeholders and community members. As you can see, I couldn't really give you an easy 170-page rundown of the document, but these are some strategies on the left-hand side, and it kind of goes into just a brief, if you were to open the document, see a strategy, you'd be able to understand what the issue is, who's responsible for it, and how we're going to get to there. So you can head to the next slide. This is what a part of the plan looks like, fully implemented. So explains the issue, addresses the risks, explains who's responsible, how we're going to evaluate it, and potential actions in the future. Through that plan, we've developed two potential projects for the semester. So the Green Guide to Monroe County, we've been talking with Visit Bloomington, and I think it'd be really cool to have an environmentally friendly green guide to Monroe County, something that promotes not only the environment but tourism as well. Monroe County is a very highly visited county, and having the ability to kind of showcase our environment and the, what's the word? Maybe like smaller, lesser-known businesses that don't get as much traction, that'd be an excellent way for them to see this. As well as, we've been talking with the Emergency Management Department about a text reporting option, something that you could text Monroe County, some non-emergent issue, obviously we don't want this to become a 911 situation. Just something that's an issue, like a heat-related issue, water-related issue, and Monroe County would be able to get back with you immediately. So that's an avenue that we're exploring, looking into different areas, and that's the end of my presentation. Thank you guys so, so much. It's been absolutely awesome working with Peter and Kelsey and everyone in the Highway Department. I've learned a lot, and I'm very, very proud of where we've come from.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind waiting there a moment, see if we have comments or questions. Commissioner Jones is on the Blue Ribbon Commission, and I'd like to throw it to you first.
Yes, well, welcome, Victoria. The work you're doing is not only awfully important, but it's really exciting also. The thought of a Green Guide to Monroe County is a wonderful idea. I think a lot of people come here because of our environment and the work we put into protecting it, and I think this will help a whole lot. Thanks for your work so far and for the work you will be doing.
Of course, thank you so, so much. It's really been awesome to see this grow. I know I've come in on the back end trying to get this all wrapped up, but the work that's been done and the progress and just the heart that everyone has for this project is very, very warming.
Great. Let's see if Commissioner Githens has any comments or questions.
Well, yes, this, well, your presentation was just flawless. I'm very impressed with your professionalism, but I wanted to know what a Vatican de Castri internship is, which is one of the things you had listed.
Yeah, that's a, it's kind of an odd one. So I've worked with the Environmental Resilience Institute at IU as a McKinney Climate Fellow for the past couple of summers, and they really partner with local organizations. And I just got lucky enough that Mundell &amp; Associates in Indianapolis, their CEO is very high up in the Catholic world and somehow got tapped by the Pope to run the Ladato See Action Platform, which is a Catholic call to action to protect the environment and the earth. So we worked on developing a pilot program for them to kind of evaluate parishes, the structures of them, not as much the people, we're not there yet, it was a pilot program, but just a general energy sustainability audit, and it was really interesting. I learned a lot, and learned a lot about Catholicism, too. It was a great summer.
That's, it's really interesting, yeah, thank you. No, I appreciate your work so far, and I think there are so many, you know, potential projects, and I know, for example, the, one of the things that appeared a couple times on that list of action items relates to wastewater, right? And so the city has their own climate resiliency project going on, and it's the cities that treats wastewater, not the counties. So is that something where we can work with the city, or are you specifically thinking in terms of septic systems that are around the county?
It's sort of multifaceted. Definitely, the city of Bloomington is a very, very big help. They've got a great McKinney Climate Fellow as well, so it's something that, as we flush out the matrix and figure out exactly who is responsible for what, a lot of these projects, we will get involved with the city of Bloomington, just because there is so much crossover in our utilities. But there is also the potential, like, we don't want to forget about the rural residents that have septic systems and things like that. So it would probably be a two-part, conjoined effort with us kind of focusing more personally in Monroe County on the rural residents.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing you and working with you, and I appreciate your, your hard work and the experience and knowledge you're bringing to this. It's really impressive.
Awesome. Thank you guys so, so much for having me.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other department that wishes to offer an update for us today? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our proclamation, and we will begin with Commissioner Githens.
Yes. This is a proclamation in observance of Women's History Month, whereas we recognize and appreciate the potential that local individuals and area groups, such as Monroe County Women's Commission, have to effect important change in the ongoing fight for equal rights and representation for women in political, professional, and personal life. And we value the accomplishments to date of localized women's movements, which historically have preceded national and international efforts. In 1904, after a fatal railway accident occurred, the Local Council of Women decided it was time Bloomington had a hospital. So in 1905, this group of women purchased a 10-room brick house to serve as Bloomington's first hospital. Of course, the hospital evolved over the years, but for over 100 years, until Bloomington Hospital merged with Clarion Health in 2008, it was the Local Council of Women who oversaw Bloomington Hospital. We wish to acknowledge all of the women involved in this organization, who made a difference in the lives of so many local residents. New Yorkers first recognized National Women's Day in 1909. Europeans first celebrated International Women's Day in 1911, and the United Nations ultimately recognized International Women's Day in 1975. And while Californians initially created Women's History Week in 1978, Women's History Month was finally recognized nationally in 1987.
The National Women's History Alliance has designated women who advocate for equality, diversity, and inclusion as its 2024 focus, noting, as members of families, civic, and community groups, businesses, and legislative bodies, women are in the forefront of reevaluating the status quo. They are looking anew at what harmful social policies and behaviors exist and often subtly determine our future. And working to achieve greater equity, diversity, and inclusion in both public and private sectors is essential for improving the lives of local women and their families.
And as we say every week in our Commissioner's Statement, we will fight and resist discrimination and harmful policies, no matter their source. Now therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim our observance of March 2024 as Women's History Month in Monroe County. And just a reminder that we are the first and only three female-led Board of Commissioners in the state of Indiana. All right. And with that, we will move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on our agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and please include your name and your county of residence, if you would please, and we'll begin right here in the Nat U Hill Room. Mr. Spoonmore?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Eric Spoonmore, Monroe County resident, president of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce.
Feel free to adjust that mic if you'd like.
Yeah.
There you go. All right.
Is that a little bit better?
That's good.
I, just a big kudos to Victoria for that presentation. It is so nice that we have such young talent living here while they're students at IU, and that we have government organizations that are providing opportunities for them to do that great work, let's do everything we can to retain that talent in Monroe County. Just a couple of quick announcements that I wanted to bring you to your attention, which I think aligns very strongly with your proclamation there, as well as your statement. The Chamber, along with the Community Foundation, the Indiana Youth Institute, Cook Medical, is partnering on an event at the Convention Center on March 19, 2024. This will be from 11:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and all of our elected leaders in the county and city are invited to this, and I wanted to bring it to your attention. This is the convening for Inclusive Advantage that will be done by our friend, Nichelle Wash with the Garden Group. I think we all know her very well here locally. She's been a member of the Women's Commission and has done a lot of work from the Monroe County Government. This is going to, the purpose of this event is to build a comprehensive county-wide DEI strategy that fosters an environment where all who call Monroe County home can succeed. The convening for Inclusive Advantage will provide an opportunity for community organizations to convene with others, working within and across respective sectors, with the ultimate goal of advancing practices that engage all community voices and ensure all have access to community resources. In short, this initiative will provide space for community organizations to discuss how we can best ensure everyone in Monroe County from all backgrounds can achieve and reach their full potential. The audience for this will be reserved for local leadership, diversity, equity, and inclusion practitioners and leaders, as well as DEI-adjacent key stakeholders who are leading and influencing DEI justice and anti-racist efforts. So I will leave a copy of this flyer for you all with Mr. Cockrell. Also, I am very pleased to announce the annual's new, the Chamber's annual new publication called Connect Bloomington. This is a community guide and chamber directory. It's got a lot of really cool, inspiring stories about our local businesses here, all the places that we know that make Bloomington, Monroe County, such a wonderful, vibrant, compassionate community. Encourage you all to check this out. I'll leave a few copies for you there, but we'll be doing this every year. It's been a great success for us, and we're already looking forward to what we will be able to do with it next year. So thank you all very much. Appreciate the time this morning.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer public comment for an item not on our agenda? Either raise your hand or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from February 28, 2024, and from the executive session of February 13, 2024.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any comments, edits, corrections? Okay. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for February 28, 2024, and from the executive session of February 13, 2024?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much. Move on to our next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, March 6, 2024, and payroll, March 8, 2024.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Gregory, our auditor, please tell us all about it.
Will do. Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for March 6, 2024, totals $12,837,053.63. That does include all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for March 8, 2024, includes $1,495,170.24 in direct costs, and the remaining $641,088.30 were for indirect costs, for a grand total of $2,136,258.54.
All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions for our auditor? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
No.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, March 6, 2024, and payroll, March 8, 2024?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much. Thank you to our auditor. All right. With that, I will note for the record, we've received a report from Waits and Measures, January 16 to February 15, 2024, and Commissioner Githens wanted to make a comment about it.
Mr. Souter for his diligent, diligent work, and he's always on the go. And before I became Commissioner, I always thought, like, the little symbols I saw, like, on the fuel dispensing machines and things like that, were something done by the state of Indiana, and they're not. They're done at the county level. And one of his jobs is to check, to make sure that when you go to the grocery store, the things that you see pre-waisted are actually the correct weight. So this last month, he found that there was a problem with a subcontractor, and it was in more than one store. He reached out to other counties, to their Waits and Measure inspectors, found out that it was widespread issue, and has now been working with national folks to get this resolved, because it's more than just in Indiana even. And so it was our inspector, our Waits and Measures inspector, who discovered this and didn't just get it taken care of locally. He went beyond, above and beyond, and so I really want to thank him for that.
Yeah, it's really, really nice work on his part, and appreciate that, and I'm sure folks in other counties and states appreciate it as well. And he also noted on his report that, that he's working with gas stations to plan for the traffic related to the eclipse, and I thought that was a really smart idea as well. So he's very proactive, and really, we really do appreciate his hard work and thank him for that. Did you want to add anything?
He worked with the Emergency, our Emergency Management Department on the things related to the fuel dispensers, and so I just got goosebumps reading that.
Yes, I've gotten to know Mr. Souter quite well over the years, because one of his jobs is checking all of the scales that people at the farmer's market use. This entails him getting up and coming down to the farmer's market at about 5:00 in the morning on a Saturday to make sure that he doesn't disrupt business too much. And this is very much appreciated by all the vendors, and I think also the customers. We can just be confident that what we're doing is correct, and I am well aware of the fact that Mr. Souter has been very proactive in his job.
Really impressive, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Souter. Okay, we will move on to new business, and the first item is something we're going to actually do next week, which is the opening of Employee Clinic Requests for Proposals. That's going to happen on March 13 rather than today, so I just want to note that. And so now we will move on to item B, please.
Yes. Move approval of the Convention Center Service Agreement, fund name, lit special purpose, fund number 1114, in an amount of $1,600.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Vanessa Schmidt, Deputy Director of the Youth Services Bureau. I'm here with Hannah Lincheck, our Prevention Coordinator, and we are just asking, again, we're working with Monroe County Convention Center for our ninth annual Monroe County Childhood Conditions Summit, MC3, and we are asking for this service agreement to be approved, to just hold the necessary space for us to hold our annual summit this year on October 30 at the Convention Center. And we do want to note that we are having substantial savings from them, over around $2,700 in our service agreement.
Excellent. All right, thank you so much. Let's see if there's comments or questions. Commissioner Githens?
I look forward to once again attending the MC3 Summit. I've been there a couple times, and so I appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I, it's rather remarkable that Monroe County has something like this. It's happened for nine years in a row. It's one of the things that makes us rather proud to be from here. So thank you so much for your efforts, and I hope it's very well attended and goes well.
We'd like to see everybody there. Yeah, absolutely. It's a good early advertisement, so folks can set the date on their calendar for October 30. Excellent. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Convention Center Service Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Izzy's rental agreement, fund name, County General and Parks Non-Reverting, fund numbers 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
Second. All right, we have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Mr. Robertson joining us from via Teams. Please tell us about it.
Yes, good morning. So as mentioned, the service agreement is with-
So as mentioned, the service agreement is with Izzy's Rental, an amount not to exceed $5,000. So the service is cleaning the porta toilets at the restrooms along the county greenways and county parks. Without going into too much detail, I'll just say that our staff is very thankful these services exist. We contracted with Izzy's last year. We were happy with their work, and we're hopeful that this is approved again this year. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. We've seen this before.
Yes, you have.
Commissioner Githens?
I understand that these, some of these have to be cleaned up like twice a week even, that these are things that are well-used.
Yes, they are very well-used. In the wintertime, we try to do once a week if we can, but certainly spring and most definitely summer, we'll ramp it up to twice.
Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Izzy's Rental Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens? I'm sorry, I did not hear Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item, please.
Move approval of High Tech Crime Unit MOU Agreement Number Two. Fund name, High Tech Crime Unit, Fund Number 9159, in an amount not to exceed $346,800 across two years.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Hamlin joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request for your signature on a second memorandum of agreement between our office and the trustees of IU to continue funding for the Monroe County Regional High Tech Crime Unit. The prosecuting attorney oversees the High Tech Crime Unit. However, the day-to-day activities are taking place over at IU through IU Police Department. So this is an agreement about how that contract's going to be carried out.
All right. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any comments or questions. Commissioner Githens?
I just wanted to note that this covers, what, an eight-county area? Is that it? Eleven, actually. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
No, this is a really, really wonderful program. Thank you for continuing this work and taking this leadership role through your office. Appreciate that. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on item D, the High Tech Crime Unit MOU Agreement Number Two?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of Impact Solutions Memorandum of Understanding. Fund names, JDAI Coordination and JDAI Performance Bonus Grant. Fund numbers, 9143 and 9146, in an amount not to exceed $10,500 and not to exceed $5,250 for each grant.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. McAfee joining us. Good morning.
You do. Hello. Good morning. And you're going to see me, I think, for the next four event, or next four topics. So we'll get to spend a lot of quality time together. So what this is for is an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding. As you all know, we get JDAI grant dollars every year, and this year, once again, we were fortunate to receive bonus grant funds, which means our outcome measures, the thing the state wants us to see that we're doing, were superior, so we got some extra funding. Good job, Monroe County. And the next four awards are part of what we're doing with that money. This is to allow for data visualization. One of the core elements of JDAI is data-driven decisions, and I will tell you, I am not a data person, so looking at spreadsheets with ups and downs and numbers across it is hard for me to digest. Impact Solutions does a fantastic job of bringing that data to life, so this just allows us to continue that good work with them.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just that I'm pleased that this is continuing, and the JDAI has been a pretty wonderful program generally.
Commissioner Githens?
Just want to report to the public that JDAI stands for Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, and this is one of the ways that we prevent our youth from coming into contact with our correctional system. It's fabulous.
Yeah, really important work. Really appreciate this. And data is obviously so important in evidence-based programming, so let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Impact Solutions MOU?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of Family Solutions Memorandum of Understanding. Fund name, JDAI Performance Bonus Grant. Fund number, 9146, in an amount not to exceed $6,050.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. McAfee, please tell us about this one.
Yes. Hello. So we have heard the call from our families in the community that sometimes raising adolescents is a set of challenges that we're not all equipped to handle well all the time, and I'm speaking, I'm smiling because I'm speaking from personal experience. And the Parent Project is a evidence-based curriculum that is designed to support parents and caregivers raising strong-willed kids. It is a 10-week program that we have some, three local facilitators now trained to be able to provide, so I will be back in front of you probably in the next couple of weeks to get an MOU to actually provide that training to our community. It is intentionally for parents who are struggling with boundaries and rules and noncompliance. You know, so many of those normal, traditional adolescent behaviors that quite honestly have become criminalized in the way that we deal with our families and young people. And this is an effort to support families, as was said a minute ago, to prevent them from entering the youth justice system, to help parents and caregivers feel a little bit more equipped in what to do and how to do it.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
How do families find out about the program?
Please give me a call. I can put my contact information in the chat, happy to answer telephone calls, email, whatever is easiest for people. My direct number is 812-349-2649. And I'm laughing at myself because I said chat. Honestly, I don't even know if Teams has a chat. This is my first opportunity to use it. So I'm with the probation department, Christine McAfee. Please feel free to reach out to me to learn more.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just think this is a wonderful idea, a fantastic plan. I've known many, many parents who have felt pretty helpless when it came to their adolescent children, and hopefully this will help them out a lot.
Yeah, I, this sounds like a great program, and I think, you know, I'm just imagining that there will be a lot of networking as well among the parents who attend these trainings. They're going to have a support community that they can lean on in the future, which I think will be really fabulous, too. So great idea, great use of those bonus dollars. Let's see if there's any comment on this item. Raise your hand in Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the MOU with Family Solutions?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Warehouse Memorandum of Understanding. Fund names, JDAI Programming and JDAI Performance Bonus Grant. Fund numbers, 9145 and 9146, in an amount not to exceed $14,500, and again, that's broken out to not to exceed $7,250 for each of the two grants.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. McAfee?
Yes. Hello. Hello. This is another really exciting partnership with the Warehouse, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with. It's an amazing community center down by Switchyard Park. Dave Wild, who is their executive director, and I were having conversations, gosh, it's probably been a year and a half ago or so, and he was talking about the young people 12 and under, that he was having to turn away from his facility because for liability purposes, that age had to have adult supervision. For a variety of reasons, parents, caregivers weren't always able to join those young kids, and so when that happened, he had to turn them away. And so what this funding does is it pays staff to provide that direct, one-on-one supervision, and in turn, it's providing lots of opportunities for mentorship as well. They currently go to three of the apartment complexes very near the Warehouse, and they will pick up kids, they will provide transportation to the Warehouse, they provide supervision. The grant also allows for food items to be purchased because, you know, again, speaking from my own experience, I think my kids woke up hungry and stayed hungry all day, so this allows for some nutritious snacks and making sure that they stay regulated.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Another great program.
Commissioner Githens?
This is not the first time we've heard this either, and so I'm really excited that you've gotten additional money to make this go even further.
Make it even better. Excellent. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill room. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Warehouse MOU?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of Memorandum of Understanding with People and Animals Learning Services, also known as PALS. Fund name, JDAI Performance Bonus Grant. Fund number, 9146, in an amount not to exceed $3,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. McAfee, the last of the list. Thank you.
Yes. Hello. PALS, it is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity out on the west side of town, and they currently provide equine assisted interventions with a variety of populations in Monroe County. And equine assisted interventions are starting to kind of get a buzz within the youth justice system. Horses are pretty cool animals, and they have a really good instinct or knack to provide immediate feedback with individuals and can help identify emotions, can help calm people, and they give immediate feedback. So we are so fortunate to be working with PALS in a pilot to provide programming to up to 10 participants. Our goal is it would be five caretaker parents, five young people who would go through this 10-week program and start learning some different ways to manage emotions, identify emotions, develop trust in some of those really critical social, emotional skills. And the thing I have missed saying about the last three programs, that I want to make us, again, a huge shout-out to our community, because of these grant opportunities and the willingness of our community partners, these are offered at no cost to the community. We try, we're trying to reduce any barriers that would prevent folks from being able to participate. So again, if somebody's interested in learning more, has an idea about another agency we could partner with, or just wants to hear about JDAI, I am here and ready, willing, and able to talk.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Just kudos. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
I think I'm more excited about this program than any of them. Frequently troubled youth seem to be able to associate and relate to animals so much better than they are able to other human beings, and something like this that helps them to know themselves better is really a great opportunity.
And I just imagine that when this bonus grant came in, you had this list of the dream projects, and you just kind of went down that list and made a lot of things happen. So this is a great program, so thank you for that, and thank you for sharing all this information with the community today. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the People and Animals Learning Services MOU?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes, and I also want to thank PALS for making this possible.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-15, Update of Health Department Fees.
We have a motion?
Second, sorry.
That's okay. We have a motion and we have a second. I don't know who is presenting this today.
Well, I will take a stab at it unless Dave Schilling walks in. I was at some of the meetings where these things were discussed. I think you'll find that the primary changes would be in the mobile or the seasonal retail food establishments, and what this will do, what says is for, if you're going to one to three different markets, it will be $100. If you're going to four to six different markets, it will be $200, and anything, nine months or less would be that $100 fee. That's primarily where we talked about the changes. It also is going to have a definition of what a multi-market retail food establishment, what that is, and it references the food markets and things like that. So that's the change that I am mostly aware of, and I'm not going to say there's not another one in there, but I think that's the major change of this.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes. It's really very important that these businesses be inspected by the Health Department. At the same time, they tend to not make a huge amount of money, and these fees seem quite reasonable for the importance of what it allows for without really, hopefully, affecting their business too much.
Commissioner Githens? Comments, questions?
I just want to comment that this is another way that the Monroe County government works to ensure that we have things done properly within the county and that we're protecting health.
And really, this started because of some of the local producers who we had conversation with and mentioned to me specifically that this was a burden for their business to have to pay individually for each license, and so this is a really great compromise, and I want to thank the Health Department, the Health Board, and our legal staff for making this all happen. Appreciate it. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Ordinance 2024-15?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much, and our next item, please.
Move approval of FIZIO and First Appraisal Group Proposals for West State Route 46 and Hunter Valley Road. Fund- and Hunter Valley Road. Fund Name Edit Band, Fund Number 4816, in an amount of $950 for EDVIZIO and $3,750 for First Appraisal Group.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, and I'm going to give a little background on this because I think it's important that the public hears why we're looking at this. This is a, two appraisals which were required to do in order to determine what our maximum price is for a piece of ground in, along the 46 corridor. These two appraisals, these are being requested because we were looking at the Thompson site for our jail facility and our, in moving the, co-locating the justice center there, ran into a lot of issues. Some of them were financial, some of them were timing, and I think when we had an executive session with the council and the sheriff's staff, including the sheriff, the, dealing with the electrical lines would require at least a two to two and a half year delay in being able to really do a lot of work on that property. And the, everybody at that meeting kind of surmised that that kind of a delay would be a real problem and a hindrance to being able to really get our inmates in a facility or, in a facility that is humane and makes sense. So when we had looked at property and we decided to focus on Thompson, we had done a search of probably three to four, a shortlist of three or four different properties. And so this was, this area was the next one on that list of where we had looked at before. So we reached out to the, to the owner. It's a different site than what we looked at before because of, the reason it was so low is because of some of the site issues that we were dealing with a different part of that property. And so this is just kind of to get the ball rolling on, hey, what is this really going to cost? And, you know, and then shortly here after this, you'll probably see a Phase One environmental review. I'm going to work with DLZ to kind of do the, some, where do we want to do the geotechnical things? So we're kind of looking at this the same way we looked at the Thompson site, where, you know, we did the Phase One and we did the geotech, and we got that information. We determined, hey, here are some issues with this site that we need to review, and then we'll reach out to, if those come up, we'll reach out to the people who we need to contact to review them to see how this one works. So this is kind of that first step. Let's see what the price will be. I would just note that the difference between the two prices was not shocking to me because the EDVIZIO group had reviewed this property recently, and so they didn't need to do a lot of the backroom work that you would typically, that First Appraisal Group will have to do coming in fresh to the, to the site. So that's the request.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for the explanation. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I think that in addition to the power lines at the Thompson site, there was also a huge mound of sort of refuge that is going to have to be moved. And it's 53 feet high and what, five or six acres, and that would have been perhaps another delay, an additional cost to that site. So I'm pleased that we're, that we have another option to consider here.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm, it's good to be moving forward again. It took, well, it took a lot of discussion and consideration to come to this decision, and of course, it's not a final decision yet. We're just looking at the possibility of using this property. But it's good to be moving forward. This whole process has taken longer than we would have liked. So it's great to hear this.
Yeah. I will, I will just note, because I've, I've heard still some folks in the community who say, well, why can't you use downtown property that the commissioners already own? Why can't this be downtown? There isn't enough space. That was one of the things we asked DLZ to look at from the very beginning. Is there any property that we have that could be used? We will not do a multi-floor jail. They're, they're such a huge expense, but also there are so many security risks involved that we're not going to look at doing a multi-floor jail. And so, no, we cannot do a jail downtown. So now what? So we, we talked to, well, we did talk to the city council about Hopewell, but they were multiple years into their development plans, and we're not interested in potentially talking about swapping properties or doing other things. We talked to them, to the city planning about a property on Fullerton Pike. The plan commission voted no. We then moved to Thompson. We heard from neighbors, and that was an important part of this for us because there were a lot of concerns, especially regarding traffic. I think that was probably the most salient point that we heard. And now we have this information about the time and cost to build at Thompson, and it is formidable. And that, that time lag costs money too, in terms of inflation for construction. And on top of all of that, there's the human cost of delay that we talked about at the county council meeting. So, so this is our next, our next site. And, you know, there are pros and cons with every site. With every site, we are going to look at transportation. We understand it's vital to have transit. We're going to be looking at that. We know it's going to be an ongoing fixed cost for operating a justice center. So, you know, and no matter where we go, that's going to be a fixed cost. So it is good to move forward, but this is part of that process. And we haven't stopped working on this. And we are going to continue to work on this, and hopefully we will find the best site possible. We are never going to make everyone happy, but we are certainly listening and learning and doing everything we can to investigate each site as we move along. And this makes the most sense to me right now as a really good site because it lacks, it lacks near neighbors. It is at a very easily accessible location in the county. And, and that, those two things alone are, are really significant for us. So we look forward to seeing what comes out of this and appreciate Mr. Cockrell's help on getting this moving as well. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the EDVIZIO and First Appraisal Group Proposals for West State Road 46 and Hunter Valley Road property?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of Financial Solutions Group, TIF, TIF, rather, annual report contracts, fund names Bloomington Township slash 46 Corridor Economic Development Area, Fullerton Pike Economic Development Area, Westside Economic Development Area, and Curry Profile TIF District. Fund numbers 4921, 4922, 4920, and 4934, in an amount not to exceed $16,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, we have four different tax increment finance districts, or TIF districts, within the county. And each year, we have to have an annual report to the county council by April. And so each year, we contract to have Financial Solutions Groups put that document together. They, anybody who wants to see what they look like, they end up on the county's website, on the redevelopment commission's page. And it gives a lot of information about what's going on the TIF, what the revenues are, what are the planned projects in the TIF. And they're each different, so each, you kind of kind of have to look at each with a different lens. So this is the contracts for those. They are paid out of the TIF funds. The redevelopment commission has reviewed these contracts and has recommended approval.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
This is something we do annually, so thank you for making sure it gets done on time.
Absolutely. This is one of the big tasks that Mr. Cockrell engages in throughout the year, which is working as the attorney for the redevelopment commission. And it is a, it is a big undertaking. We just had a meeting last night, and, and the redevelopment commission attended the plan commission's administrative meeting to share some information and make some requests. So it's, it's a lot of work, but this financial side is, is vital to understanding the financial health, the fiscal health of each of these TIFs. Let's see if there's any public comment on these items. Raise your hand in Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Financial Solutions Group TIF Annual Report Contracts?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Yes, move approval of award for EMB paving, the Marlin Hills Drainage and Paving Project. Fund Name American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. Fund Number 8950, in an amount of $369,693.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge, tell us all about, please.
Thank you. Actually, I really have really one announcement really quick that I just received. So we submitted, Monroe County did, for the replacement of Bridge 913 on Business 37 North. Construction is little over $5 million, and Monroe County was just notified that they were awarded that. So.
Very good.
Yeah, been waiting for that. Something definitely needs replaced.
Yes.
So we opened bids on February 22nd, 2024, by Monroe County Highway Representatives. This project is for paving and some more in-depth drainage improvements to the subdivision. The county council and the commissioners had approved six subdivisions through the ARPA funds for paving projects and drainage improvements, and we had to hire a local engineering firm to get a little bit more extensive design for some of the area in this subdivision. We opened the bids. We received three bids, Milestone, EMB, and Crider and Crider. EMB being the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder. We will put notifications out as soon as we have a timeline and schedule. We're looking at June or July for this work to be completed. So we would ask that it be awarded to EMB paving.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it's wonderful that we have this money available to use for subdivisions. The subdivision roads don't receive quite the traffic that the main roads do, but they do still wear out. So it's really good to be able to help these neighborhoods out.
Commissioner Githens?
I appreciate the fact that it's going to improve the drainage also in its area. And the fact that it will be done this summer is even better.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so this is one of multiple subdivision projects that the highway department, Ms. Ridge, brought to us at, at our meetings for consideration for ARPA funding. I'm so glad that Ms. Ridge did this. It's been a very, it's been a really great thing. We ran into some folks and learned that they live at the Aloha subdivision, and, and they were just over the moon about how great their new paving is. So I just wanted to pass that along. So this is really important work, and, and the way that Ms. Ridge and Mr. Turner and others have organized things so that we're not just repaving, but we're dealing with drainage and culverts and ditches and rock or whatever has to be put at the roadside to keep these roads in great shape for much longer. I happen to be, I drove on Bottom Road this weekend. That is a great example. That, it's like night and day if you're on that road, the way it was before and the way it is now. It's not just because of the new paving, but you can tell across the drainage that this is going to make a big difference, especially on that street in particular. So thank you, thank you. This is wonderful. I'm sure the folks at Marlin Hills are going to be over the moon. So this will be good. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none. All those in favor of awarding EMB paving, the Marlin Hills Drainage and Paving Project signify by saying aye.
I do a roll call vote?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on awarding EMB paving, the Marlin Hills subdivision? I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I got it right through all the items until the last one. All right. We don't have any appointments today. We do have some announcements, and we just want to start with a thank you to the city of Bloomington, to Mayor Thompson, to the city council for approving the memorandum of understanding regarding the convention center. And I think Commissioner Githens wants to add something.
I, I am just so pleased because this is a new council, a new mayor, and it just went so quickly. Once we had, once the county council signed it and we signed it, it was done with, in like a week. Just so, so pleased at how quickly this has moved forward, and this will allow for other things to happen in terms of the city being able to bond, to move the expansion forward.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is something that people in the, at least some people in the community have been waiting for, for a long time, and are really very excited about it. It's been a bit of a struggle getting here, but now with the new mayor, things are moving swimmingly, and we're really excited to be moving ahead with this.
I think it reflects a turning of the page in city-county relations to an even better place than it's ever been. So I appreciate everyone's hard work on making this happen. So thank you all. I do want to share a few other items, and then I'll see if my colleagues have other things to share as well. There is, again, a public meeting for Fullerton Pike Phase Three, and this will be held on March 25th, 5:30 to 6:30 at Bachelor Middle School Cafeteria. So anyone who's interested in that project and what it will entail is welcome to attend. There's still free COVID-19 test kits available at the Monroe County Health Department at 119 West 7th, and you can check in with the county public health clinic at 333 East Miller Drive for information on vaccines or for testing. We are, as always, accepting applications for boards and commissions. Please go to co.munro.in.us for more information. Specifically, we are looking for residents who wish to serve on the plan review committee. This will only be about a six-month appointment because once the new county development ordinance is passed, we will, we will not have a plan review committee for a while. So if you're interested in a short-term contribution to county government, this would be a good one, and it'll really acquaint you with how planning works. The commissioners do have virtual office hours via Teams. These occur six times throughout the month. Just look at the calendar at co.munro.in.us. We also have blood drives coming up, and there have been some added as well due to the shortage in our community. But we do have today from 1:00 to 6:00, Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00, Thursday, April 4th, from 1:00 to 6:00, and Friday, April 5th, from 10:00 to 3:00. And these are all at Ivy Tech Shreve Hall, and we appreciate. And we appreciate IV Tech and the Red Cross for working with us on this and our emergency management department to make this happen. Go to redcross.org to make an appointment. Just a reminder, with spring weather and storms, it's a great time to sign up for our resident alert notification system. Go to, click on the megaphone right in the middle of the page at co.monroe.in.us. In addition, low and moderate income residents are encouraged to apply for rural housing repair funding. This is available through the American Rescue Plan Act dollars allocated by the commissioners and the council. And this is a great way to keep people in their homes if your home needs basic repairs and you cannot afford them, things like roof, floor, carpentry, HVAC, et cetera. We encourage you to contact your township trustee to find out more information. This is for residents, homeowner, homer, homeowner, owner occupied residents in the county outside the city of Bloomington. And for those who are in Perry Township, outside the city, we ask that you contact the commissioner's office directly rather than your trustee and they would, they would tell you the same thing. So, yes.
I would just like to add, for trustees and for vendors who might be responding to, to correspondence from me, please ensure that you put rural repair in the subject line. Otherwise, your email gets lost in a plethora of other ones. So please just put rural repair in that subject line and I will not lose you. Thanks.
Thank you. That's great. I also want to note that, that we are participating in the Indiana Broadband Office Federal Government BEAD Broadband Access Program as a challenge entity. In other words, we have to prove the negative and you're going to be seeing a lot more information about this beginning next week here during our meeting. So please stay tuned. But this is going to be a massive outreach program. We have until March 17th to challenge what the FCC has on their map for each particular address in terms of whether they are served by internet and whether they are served sufficiently. So it's something that I have spent a lot of time on and we are looking forward to being part of that outreach effort and making sure that everyone in this community understands what this, this challenge means and how they can ensure that they have access to sufficient internet infrastructure. So be looking for that. There is also coming up a, the Soil and Water Conservation District is going to be having a meeting at IV Tech on March 23rd. It begins at 8:00 a.m. There'll be a speaker and an opportunity to learn more about your local Soil and Water Conservation District. So colleagues, have I missed anything?
I believe the Soil and Water Conservation District would like people to let them know if they're coming. I think they asked for reservations.
Yes. I don't have that information with me.
I also wanted to say, and I forgot to say this when we were talking about the approval of the appraisals for property on State Route 46 and Hunter Valley Road. I was recently talking with Iris Keisling, former county commissioner, who said that, that her group was talking about a new jail 20 years ago. And so I am very, very pleased that we are able to move this forward in a way that had not been done for decades.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, thank you so much. We do have items on our work session agenda. I'd like to reconvene by 11:30. That's a note for, and a note for our planning staff is that I will have a maximum of one hour to get their two, their two items done. So please note that to planning and I'll remind you of that at 11:30. All right, so we are adjourned. Our next meeting is March 13th, right here in the Nat U Hill Room at 10:00 a.m. And our work session begins at 11:30. Thank you.